We've got a minute, less than a minute. Let's see, we met on the 12th, didn't we, last Monday?
Mm-hmm.
All right, reconvene the meeting of August 12th. This time I turn the meeting over to Vice Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Godwin is going to do our invocation and our pledge today.
Let us bow our heads. Most holy and almighty God, we thank you for this day. Thank you as we come together to do the business of this county. Thank you for over shallowness with the love, the kindness, mercy, and grace. We pray, Lord, that all our wisdom come together because of what you have done and what you're gonna do. Bless us, Lord, as we convene in this meeting, that we give you the glory for the thoughts and the wisdom that you give us now, Lord God. We give you the glory and honor. Do your righteous and wonderful name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Godwin and Vice Chair Lee. At this time, I'd like to welcome Paul Allen to the scene. I'm not sure what the scene is, but we're gonna go for it.
I'm humbled and honored to be a part of this.
Well, we're glad to have you. Let's see, at this time, we will take up the consideration for the Board of Education application on a grant for the schools.
Yes, sir.
All right, and I see Dr. King here. Would you like to give us an update on this?
Yeah, so good morning, everybody. Update, state released the applications on August 1st, same application that it was last year for rebuilding Houghton High School. Request the same amount that we did last year, so our hope is just to submit the same application. It is a much quicker turnaround this year. So, you know, last year it was due, I think, January 5th. This year it's due September 13th. So, it's due in less than a month. And so, we're coming to ask County Commissioners for the same request we had last time, which was the 4.177, sorry, 4.2 million, for the, to submit the application for the rebuild of Houghton High School.
Okay.
Remind me how long it took us to find out last year?
So, we found out in about April. I will say that we'll find out by November, because Captain Truitt is the one who decides, and she is leading office in November. So, we'll have to know by early November.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions? All right. We were here last week, and we reconvened to meet today just so that we could get this on the agenda in quick time, so to speak.
We greatly appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. We have a resolution here, and I guess this is the same resolution as last year?
Yes, sir.
Could we get Stephanie maybe to read that?
Okay. Whereas the Sampson County Board of Education has expressed a desire to apply for a $62 million grant through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund, a state fund established to assist counties with critical public school building capital needs using revenue from the NC Education Lottery. And whereas the grant will be utilized to build a new high school for the Houghton School District, a district whose existing high school was constructed in 1957. And whereas the Sampson County Board of Education has informed the Sampson County Board of Commissioners that the grant application will require a local contribution from Sampson County in the amount of $4,228,314. And whereas the Sampson County Board of Education has also indicated that $1,182,487 in sales tax refunds will be available to be used in the construction of the new high school. And whereas the Sampson County Board of Commissioners finds, based upon the information provided by the Sampson County Board of Education, that the total project cost for the new high school will be $67,410,811. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Sampson County Board of Commissioners applauds the Sampson County Board of Education and the citizens of the Houghton School District for their proactive efforts to obtain funding for a new high school. To that end, the Sampson County Board of Commissioners hereby approves the appropriation of money to provide the required local contribution of $4,228,314 for the project, subject to the following conditions. The $4,228,314 appropriation is contingent upon the award of the $62 million Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. In the event that the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction does not award a $62 million grant for the construction of the new Houghton High School, the appropriation authorized by this resolution is rescinded. All bidding, procurement, and contracting, including the procurement of an award of architectural, engineering, and construction contracts connected to the project, shall be carried out in strict compliance with the requirements imposed by North Carolina law, the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant Regulations, and other applicable laws. Soils for the proposed project site will be thoroughly evaluated and tested as needed to ensure that any special requirements are included in the project plans and specifications prior to bid of the contract of construction. In the event that any of the projected $1,182,487 in sales tax refunds are needed prior to the actual receipt thereof, funds will be advanced by the Sampson County Board of Education until the sales tax refunds are received. The Sampson County Board of Education understands, and the Sampson County Board of Commissioners reiterates herein, that there are no additional county funds available to be utilized in connection with the project as local match or otherwise. The demolition of the existing Houghton High School building shall be part of the project, and the Sampson County Board of Education understands that downward adjustments may have to be made to the project scope after bids are received in order to bring the total project within available funding, provided, however, that the adjusted project must be a completed project, meaning that no additional work will be required after project completion in order to deliver a functional high school. The Commissioners further note their concern about the increased operating costs that a new high school will necessarily entail. The Board of Commissioners encourages the Sampson County Board of Education and its staff to carefully monitor the construction methods utilized and to look for any available efficiencies in the operation of the new building. The Sampson County Board of Education should inform the Sampson County Board of Commissioners of the additional costs necessary to operate the new high school as soon as practical, and this cost should account for any reductions in operating costs that will be realized from the closure and demolition of the existing Houghton High School building. This, the nineteenth day of August 2020.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. Mr. Clark, is the $1,182 a viable number for the sales tax?
I'm assuming they got the estimate through the engineers. I couldn't tell you one way or another whether that would be enough for a hospital that size or not. I know we've received some financial refunds from the others at the past.
I understand. Considering we're a year later, is the total project $67,410, is that a viable number, Dr. King?
According to our engineers, yes. They've just been building a high school further east, and actually came in with their cost estimates for engineering lower than what they expected. So, I think we'll be able to save some of our engineering, doing some HVAC systems different now that I don't understand, but trying to use some geothermal cooling and heating that's costing less to build, but it's taking a little longer to build when they do them.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
You want to change this date?
Yes, ma'am. There will be a tract at the school, correct?
Definitely.
Okay, no additional work will be required to deliver a functional high school?
Yes.
That's true. All right, have, do, do you have any estimates on cost reduction? Realize that closing the...
We have not yet. We have not met to go through those numbers yet.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
The site, because there was a thought about site across the street and the site where it's at.
Just a second.
Which one is being...
The site across the street is the one we're looking at now. We have the, I'm gonna get the wording wrong. I'm gonna say promissory note, but that's not the right word. But we have it in writing that we'll be able to buy the land at a low price once if our grant is approved by the state. And so, our board has already kind of earmarked some funds for that.
Has there been any testing on the soil? I know we had a problem when the tract was a huge issue a few years ago, and the land ended up not perking or being the type we needed for tract. Has this been vetted?
Yeah, so last year, myself, Mr. Mark Hammond from Operations, and then the engineering companies, we actually walked both sites, the site across the street and then the current site behind the building. The current site behind the building has a large ravine, gully, or gully kind of hand. So, that was one of the reasons we took that off. We didn't do full soil testing, but we did walk it. The engineer looked at it. Mark and him had some conversations that are well above my pay grade when it comes to building and construction. But they both said it on, what they say, on visual inspection, that it looked like it was okay. But they have not tested the soil, like sent it off for testing samples yet.
Good to hear.
Okay. Yeah, other questions? You're good. All right. Will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution with feasible cost that we have on our, that's before us.
Got a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, so it's passed. I think the other thing we were gonna talk about is the...
$747,000.
Right. Mr. Clark?
He's gonna share information with you that I forwarded, I think he told you one day last week.
Thank you all.
It's our first day at school, so we need to be about schools.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King.
Thank you all, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You looked at this first page that began with hazard were preparing. This is basically what happened during the budget process and subsequent to when we were calculating salaries for everyone and when we discovered our discrepancies. As we were preparing to implement the pay increases, we discovered a conflict between the language and the budget ordinance and our available funds. This issue was discovered before payment of any salary increases for this fiscal year and brought to the board's attention immediately. The original error was due to a miscommunication and inadequate follow-up during budget preparation. Salary increases included in the budget were not calculated according to the language in the budget ordinance. The budget ordinance implies that employees with 10 or more years' experience in their current grade would automatically go to the midpoint of their grade, and that was not the intent. In 2015, the county adopted a pay plan that included a process to move employees to the midpoint of their grade within 10 years. This process was dependent on the availability of funds. In the years between the adoption of that pay plan and the subsequent pay study, the county only managed two years where there were sufficient funds to move employees toward the midpoint of their grade. As a result, employee pay within grades did not move much, and new employees were making very close to the amount employees with several years of experience were making. In 2023, the county commissioned another pay study. This study made the same recommendation as our previous study. Their recommendation was that the county design incremental process to at least move employees to midpoint over a set period. The county intended to follow the previously adopted process to move employees to midpoint of their grade over a 10-year period, contingent upon satisfactory annual performance evaluation and availability of funds. The language in the fiscal year 2024-25 budget ordinance is written to achieve this objective. However, the amount of funds required to achieve this objective exceeds our available resources, and the language should have been revised prior to adoption. The cost to implement the pay increases as outlined in the budget ordinance will cost approximately $1.7 million. This amount exceeds the available resources of the county. The funding included in the budget is less than $750,000. The second page I gave you is what we would like the board to adopt as an amendment to the budget ordinance as it relates to personnel under Section 12. And that is employee base. Our ceiling for full-time employees at end of the current year was 5A. No additional positions were included for fiscal year 2024-2025. As identified in the pay study implemented in 2015, the final step to maintain the progress realized through the adoption of the pay plan is to develop and maintain a sustainable process to move all employees from the minimum to the midpoint of their assigned grade within 10 years. Understanding the process and recognizing the opportunity will address ongoing compression issues related when salaries of new hires nearly match salaries of seasoned employees. With the traditional practice of addressing cost of living issues with percentage pay increases across the board, nothing has effectively addressed the need to move employees forward through their pay grade. Effective July 1, 2024, employee salaries will be evaluated to determine the difference between employee's salary and midpoint of the assigned grade, as well as time in the pay grade. If an employee has less than one year in their grade, then the employee will receive 5% of the difference between their current salary and midpoint of their grade. If an employee has between one and six years in their grade, then the employee would receive 10% of the difference between their current salary and the midpoint of their grade. Employees with seven or more years' experience in their pay grade would receive 20% of the difference between their current salary and midpoint. No employee's increase would put them above the midpoint of their grade. The results would allow employees to realize incremental pay increases and greater reward for long-term employees. Employees at or above midpoint will not receive any increase. This keeps us within the $750,000. I guess there probably could be other options we could use to do the same thing, but this is, in going back and reviewing it, this is what we felt would work the best based on how the budgets, based on how we figured everything when we first figured $747,000 total increase. Does anybody have a question?
Any question?
Is there an easier way that this could be explained so that people could understand?
Well, what we did, that's what we did with the first page, is try to explain it. Is try to give a explanation of what occurred and what we're doing to fix it. I'm not sure we could, I mean, we could go through it and try to do something different, but the basic problem is, is the language in the budget ordinance. We didn't put that much money into the budget, and we don't have, based on what we've appropriated already, we don't have money to put more toward salaries at this time. I mean, ideally, if we'd been doing this since 2015, everybody would have been a whole lot closer. And this probably wouldn't have, this might not have made much difference at all, but we have, out of all of our employees, there are less than 30 that are, whose salary is between minimum and midpoint, is over halfway between that amount. So, we don't even have people that are making halfway to midpoint, and some of those have been here 10 years, or several of those have been here 10 years. Really, a whole lot of them based on what we had to do the other way.
Chairman Kewitt, can you help me out with this a little bit? I would like to state, just for the record, that there's been a perception that an egregious error has been made. I would like for everyone to understand, there was not an error with any money. No monies were spent. This error was caught, and it was just, I'll break it down to my level, so everybody can understand. The error was found on the Monday of our board meeting, whatever day that was. We were talking about it that afternoon. It was as simple as the wording in the budget message didn't match with what we had already voted to do. The wording in the budget ordinance was what the utopia would be, what would be the best thing we could do for our employees. We did, how much was the $3.1 million increase last year? How much was the...
3.8 was the...
3.8.
3.8.
We did 3.8. And then this year in the budget, we budgeted $747 to get that compression point. And that is very, very confusing, very hard for your average person to understand. But that's trying to get everybody on a perfect route to the salary they should be at. And we all know this is not a perfect world. But the error was found, and it was just a matter of communication and how something was worded.
Well, the pay scale is complex in the least when you go to discussing midpoint. And take into consideration, we did the pay study, so we would know exactly where we stood with all the other counties that we were comparing to, like counties as well. And the pay study found that we were then 1.1% of all the other counties, except for the hard-to-feel positions. And that's where we had been working on and making available increases until we got the pay study in place. And we had appropriated $3 million. And when, in the final result, we had to come back and put another $750,000, roughly $1,000,000, to cover that. What was overlooked was the midpoint. We were, the board basically said, this is how much money we got to spend, and we portrayed it differently in the wording of the ordinance. And so, really, we should have, a simple way of saying it was, we appropriated 3.8 million dollars, and that's all we got to spend, and that's the end of it. But they were trying to do what the ordinance said, was get people to midpoint, and there's not enough money to get it to midpoint. All right, we're talking about the pay study in 2015. We, if we'd followed that study, we could have had people increase along. But at the time, the funds, the revenue that we had, was not adequate to do that. And instead of having tax increases, we held the line where we were. Am I wrong in saying this?
That's correct. And basically, the cost of implementing the pay study in 2015, of course, far exceeded our resources as a result. It took us four years to implement the pay study.
Right.
Which didn't include any increases other than saying, if you needed to be at $10,000 as a result of the pay study, it took us four years to get you to that $10,000. For 30,000, whatever your salary was, whatever your minimum salary was, with some experience amount built in to try to spread people out along their pay grade, so there wouldn't be so much compression.
Right.
But it took us four years to do that.
Yeah, and then the pandemic came along, and we have hyperinflation, a 40-year-high inflation that has hit everyone, including salaries for everyone, even in my business and every small business or big business in the country, is facing those increases. And of course, trying to work through all that, this is what we've come up with. I think you've done a great job to get us where we are. Is it perfect? No. But you got to remember, we're Tier 1 county, which means we're one of the 40 distressed counties in the state. And where we rank in that 40 is probably pretty high. We have a small population, a large geographic county, and one of the highest tax rates in the state. Now, of course, we did a revale and adjusted it to revenue neutral and trying to hold it there. And of course, as time goes along, we'll, the Board of Commissioners will be, have to deal with this. So, that's, in a nutshell, is what I, the way I see it.
To reiterate your point, when we did the pay study, I was very encouraged that we were 1.1% within, because we were comparing with counties like Johnston County, who is revenue-rich, for lack of a better word. And we are working hard to get our employees where they need to be. We just can't be at the total perfect world yet. And along with Chairman Kewitt, I applaud what y'all have done and what the county's done for our employees, because we do appreciate them.
Yes.
I think it is explained good enough for us to understand, but the question is, the employees, do they understand? Are they taking this to be true? Are they gonna give us any problems seeing that, you know, things that is not in their favor? They might find something to say about it? Have you heard anything like that going on?
There was obviously some disappointment when employees found out that we were pulled back. However, Ms. Luth, the challenge that we have in working with our employees as well as the entire county, is getting people to take, to understand, to look at everything in the context of which is done, and then to make some choices. For example, I'll give you one. And this talks about the lack of understanding. We had a new employee this year that was started, I think, last July. Wrote us a letter in March or April, and was complaining that the Board of Commissioners did not value their employees by not giving them a sufficient raise. This employee failed to understand that she had just gotten a 4% raise in November. That kind of thing is challenging to deal with, because a lot of word and communications gets spread before you can apply the correction. The employee was somewhat appreciative when she found out that basically her facts were wrong. And she was operating on what she thought versus what she had researched and determined to be truth. The challenge we had is we do, we help people with a lot of information, a lot of times. Unfortunately, we don't get the opportunity, Ms. McLam, to correct all the damages that have been created with all the people that they have talked to before we have the opportunity to apply the context.
I know for a fact that at one pay grade, over two and a half years, they saw a $23,000 increase in salary and benefits. That was one of the top pay grades. So, if you look at where you were and what you've gotten, I think if they take facts, not someone else's facts, the true facts, they will see that they've done really well. Now, is it perfect? No. But for Sampson County, it's all that we have to offer. And to be honest with you, that's what the pay state was, was to get us on the level playing field with surrounding counties that are like us. So, I think, I think we're there. The midpoint, you know, that's the, that's the one thing that we're not able to accomplish, but maybe future boards will find some more revenue that you can do that with. I don't know. Any other questions or comments?
I just think there's gonna be some, lack of words that you said. There's gonna be a little teetering, and there's gonna be some hard questions, and I think we've got people who'll answer them for them. They'll spend time with them. As Chairman said, it's not perfect. Nothing's ever perfect in a business world, and we got to treat this like a business, and that's what we've taught them. and that's what we've talked about a while, that it is a business. So have we looked after the taxpayers? Yes, I think we have. Have we looked after our employees? Yes, I think we have. Is it perfect? No, it's not. Nothing ever is. But again, I think that you have, we've looked at this and looked at it very closely and addressed the situation to what we put in the budget, and that's as good as we can do right now. And we're going to stand firm on what we said we were doing, and you guys have made it all come together, and that's, I think, the big deal.
That's good.
On that one point you made about the taxpayer, we have to look at that as well.
There we go.
That's a huge issue, and you touched on that. They're the largest source of revenue for the county by far. I think from the businesses that I'm associated with, my business, I'm not sure we get paid on the same rate as a government employee does, and we have to be cognizant of how the taxpayer feels and what their contribution is and...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm done.
Keep in mind, too, that in the budget summary that the county manager pointed out, we have $30,800 taxpayers out of $59,000 plus, and they're the ones bearing the brunt of it. So those are the taxpayers. We have, we have to consider, you know, what the burden is on them, and we've got one of the highest tax rates in the state. So we're doing what we can. Is it perfect? No, but it's, it's pretty darn good. And taking into consideration, we appropriated $3 million that we didn't have to get to this point, and then another $750,000. So we're trying to help in every way that we possibly can. So I move that we adopt the proposed revision to Section 12 of the budget ordinance for a second. Second. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, so that's passed.
Let us all for clarification, that it helped me with as much as we can get right on what's going to happen. So this will allow us, we will make the change, we will make the change, employees will see it in their September paycheck, which is for August, but in that paycheck, they will get the equivalent of two months of increase. Yes, and it is, this is all effective July 1st, so we'll go back and recompute what it should have been for July, and that difference will go forward along with the August difference to be paid out in September paychecks.
And, and to reiterate, too, that'll be the first money that's been dispersed.
Yes, yes, sir.
So there's been no money dispersed, there's no having to recapture any money.
Right.
All right, well, I'm not sure that's clear.
There you go.
All right. Is there anything else? Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? We adjourn. Thank you.
How was your first...